Okay. I got six floor, first order of business will be the pledge of the black. You move through the minutes from March fifteen.
So moved.
Move second and a second onto a group. Uh, any sudden? Uh, to now, when you prepare. Everybody, uh, members of our conference.
I have a couple things. Got to the airport, Super Bowl, had a great time meeting with Brendan and Ken and thanked them for kind of showing me around, I mean, like the award phase being new, so it was neat to hear some kind of like there, which is for the direction of that, and they wanted it to be like a space the community can use and that sort of thing, so it's really cool. Um. I'll talk about this more later, but like super interested in mental health, both for young people and members of our community, so wanted to put out there that I've worked with Reddington Fairview to put together a mental health first aid training. I asked Norah Rock uh, town Facebook page to share it and they did, so thank you, but you know, people who work for young people, if you could put that up there. And then again, because I'm learning, I think the next thing I want to learn more about is just like how like appointments work in positions, particularly when like we appoint someone and then they don't fulfill that entire term and all of that. I had some people ask me some questions about that and didn't feel like I totally knew, so I don't know if we could meet sometime or two, something else, so I can know. Thank you.
Nice. Okay, excellent. All right, do you want to, I have, um. So it's not, so.
Uh, the my next for your next meeting is Patriots State of the Town Office and all non-emergency departments will be closed. Uh, we at the airport have a lot of things coming together now. We talked about snow removal equipment and the purchase of that uh, under grant funding, so it was initially a carrier vehicle plus now they're saying that we can't just get the snow blower that we need and put that onto the carrier vehicle, so that's going to be a big savings, which then opens the door for the design and permitting phase of the taxi line reconstruction on the four, five hundred and the six, seven hundred rows as you drive into the airport rather than right just beyond Morgans. Uh, it's in pretty bad shape right now, so that will pair um into this year for the design and permitting with construction for next year. We're going to do some communication with paying owners, but um. All else looking pretty good, it's going to fall within the scope of the budget, um, and FAA and DOT are helping us on that. The aircraft excise tax collection is underway. We've talked about that, trying to get an inventory of what um is out there for aircraft. Uh, we now have forty-one aircraft, so you know, almost fifteen new uh have been declared. Uh, we've got thirty-one of those taken care of already, this ten outstanding. Um, the just the fact of the matter, if you fail as the aircraft owner to provide proof of taxes paid elsewhere or to pay here, we will be filing a lien against the aircraft. It's ten dollars, it's ten thousand dollars. We don't have any of those aircraft, but you know, it's equity and everybody needs to pay and we can't have a struggling airport if you're not willing to kick in your ten dollars, ten bucks. If it's a fight for you, we'll put a lien on your tail. I mean, you can find another airport to call home. Everybody's going to have some skin in the game. Uh, and then at the last meeting, we had inquiry about the electricity consumption versus heating fuel efficiency. We pulled data back to winter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one uh, to pull all of that together. Bottom line is I don't have comprehensive information until we get through the winter season. That's really where we're going to see that impact, so we have that as the work in progress. Uh, right now. But I can't tell you is there is zero savings, it's just added costs. Uh, we're looking at actual just usage and consumption at this point in time. Your electricity rate back just that two years ago was eight cents and we're looking at twenty-two cents um for the same period two years later, so I know mine's doubled last six months. I mean, every month it goes up here.
It's kind of cheap one, they keep asking for this on the next way out, right?
Can I say something? I had something that they brought up when I was there was um like an interest in taking advantage of um like maybe doing a solar farm on some of that land, but they couldn't because there were Madison Electric. So I just don't know. Like if that would help with kind of some some things and.
So with the ordinance that passed
Yeah.
uh, in March, that is not allowed.
Okay.
Wouldn't be unless we generated all what we consumed there, we wouldn't be allowed to feed it back in. The issue that we had at the airport is that the airport is geographically located in Madison Electric Works coverage area. But Madison Electric Works doesn't want to spend the money to provide us the electricity, so they allow central main power to.
Okay.
Because they're right there. But in order to get solar back into the grid, we have to get agreement from Madison Electric. And they won't give that to us.
Okay.
Well, that's where all of that kind of came from. You could take it to the state house or whatever, maybe get some movement there, but it's into utility issue and obviously Madison Electric, I don't think wants any more solar onto their grid than what they're going to produce themselves, so. We had explored that and brought in private consultants, investors that would take care of that for us and nothing has ever came to fruition because of the relationship between utilities.
Okay.
It would be a good revenue source if we could get it.
Yeah.
It just, it hasn't been able to click.
Okay.
Uh, the cemetery committee met yesterday to restart discussions about uh software subscriptions and data compilation, things like that. We're going to have to peel through a lot of that information and there will probably be a recurring subscription fee, which they're aware of, it's going to end their budget. Um, yeah, so we're going to continue to look through that. We've kind of found one that we think is going to be promising. I've got to do some preliminary work and we'll all get together and look at that. Ideally, it'll help um staff it through volunteers in addition to the cemetery committee, so hopefully we'll see some needles move there and then there's a lot of projects that just didn't happen last year because of contractor variability. Uh, we're hoping to see that get picked up. Uh, we received an update from the Granger regarding their facade grant. Right now, there's a balance on the grant of just shy of five thousand, the majority of that's earmarked for second story windows replacement, so um, it's just a little bit left once that bill is paid. Uh, we opened another CD at the bank. We swept a million dollars out of our sweep account and into a nine-month CD rate of four percent. Uh, this will generate just in that nine months, an additional nineteen thousand uh in interest income of what we would have gained at the standard sweep. Our other accounts will be uh reviewed for interest rates in May uh with the bank, so we're looking forward to that. We should see an uptick there as well. Uh, Peter was able to negotiate electricity rates across the board for all of our electricity accounts. Uh, I think we paid a two cent premium to lock in for twenty-four months instead of for a quarter window. Uh, we thought that made good sense and so uh right now, the current rate was seventeen, six, five and now is going to lock us in for twenty-four months at twelve point two seven cents, so just with our sewer electricity in the streetlights, you're looking at twelve thousand dollar savings this year, thanks to that, and not the savings, but you know, uh softening of an increase more likely than not, so um that was all the work there and hopefully it'll, you know, soften what we're seeing in budget areas. Uh, fifty percent reimbursement for new generator here that came in this last week. The Amy Caller event at the library on Saturday was very well attended. Um, dozens of people were there. We appreciate her willingness, her husband, to join us and enter that talk. I went on a little longer, I think, than anybody expected because what she was talking about seemed relevant to those that were in attendance. And there's a lot of different things happening at the libraries here. If you have any questions about that, do you want to spearhead events or programming at the library? Also feel free to reach out uh to Robin down there. The new boiler was installed at um the fire station. That was the eighty-seven hundred dollars of Fabian waiting still on the determination from the insurance claim for broken down equipment that's standard covered on the policy. The LD three fifty-four, which was our submission to Senator Farron on behalf of the Road Advisory Committee to increase the threshold for required engineering on public works project. Uh, that has gone through the sausage grinder and it's now two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to require a engineer on a public works project, so a move in the right direction. It's not tied to inflation. Um, but you know, we'll take something. Uh, unfortunately though, they adjourned the other day, so um that's going to be carried over until the next special regular session. Uh, but thanks to Senator Farron and his staff, especially Ashley uh for getting that through uh for us. Your rec field day down on Route Two next to the school's town, at least kind of April thirtieth, beginning at nine A M.
Excellent. Okay, I'm a certain action on April fifth, January. Number seven.
I move the code general number seven and the total uh fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
More than that, yeah. On any discussion on that?
We've heard around, we get the programs that's up by far, nor is that.
Yes. Those are our gray flags uh from veterans and then also. Anything else? See none, all those in favor? That's it.
Well, especially actually on April fifth, uh supplemental sewer.
I move that we, is it really one ninety-five?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with it. We approve this for ninety-two dollars and forty cents.
Seven, more than a second, uh any further discussion? See none, all those in favor? That's everybody. A public car.
Five weeks yet. Are that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you were talking about? Will that apply to projects that we're going to consider this year? Or is? No, okay, I was quite a player when we said that, so it doesn't happen until it actually comes.
Then we have to, if it gets approved by legislature, then it'll take effect. It won't be under emergency, so whatever. I meant to give you a side take.
It's too late.
Okay, I was quite good on that.
Yeah, so we're at the two fifty, but it hasn't been passed, so.
The only other thing I want to say was I did talk to the foreman from Spectrum. It will probably be stopped before we see our end.
It's already April, just run, okay, so.
It ain't, it's not coming fast. It's not a priority by any means.
Are they starting out there? Are they doing any world swing town at that same time? Was there more humble stretches being done? Besides just your rope?
Yes, this was, well, we had initially planned a speech show with all the offshoots, but then it was wherever, right down and through to although. Something, so imagine they come in and do everything at the same time.
No, they're piecing it like it's, they're out there a day or maybe two. The, in, I saw what they talked to the foreman and he's, you know. This is just kind of an add-on and he's, he said this would be a long time. It's when they've got nothing to do, they won't be working a day. They're not, it's not a continuous project.
So is it this summer or next summer?
Sometime this summer.
Okay.
But it's you know, when I, it's not, there's no set.
It's just seeing rep.
Yes, well.
When, when you scheduling something so we can get um to the next road committee? Do you have anything on your?
I was waiting to get my road committee back in the Southern States.
Everybody's been gone.
I'm going next week, so.
Yes, and somebody else has been, so.
Listen, he's retired, baby.
I'll start the lab even more outside.
That's fine. Is when I was, when I was good.
Is Jeff back in?
I believe so. I saw him a while back, August period incident, so I, I believe he's back.
Okay.
He usually comes back first March.
Yeah. And any others?
Well, there is a certain issue with speed bump, but you can not. Okay, this is common. All right, well, moving forward here, uh discussion action on appointments.
Uh, the first appointment I had is for vacancy on the sewer commission. This vacancy has been all over a year. Kind M Goss, the elder M Gossman, uh has said he gives all the serve on the commitment as long as there means a vacancy. There's been a four-member board servant for a long, for that year, um and then this lack, we, we can't, because we just didn't have a board, so we couldn't process this.
So you sent a motion to. So moved.
Second motion to say, uh, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
So. We'll cut on appointments here, how's that? Won't give all your answers, but um.
They don't come in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Every April terms expire, some terms expire on standard boards and committees that then are subject to reappointment. Words like the Parks Committee or Airport Advisory, they just expire every April and reappoint them every year. Uh, the TIF committee, which whoever I am right now, everybody was appointed to a three-year term three years ago. So that will expire at the end of April.
Is that, and did they do three years?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to get to staggered terms, so rather than just the custom of the reappointment, we need to appoint two, three-year terms, two, two-year terms and a one-year term to then get them on that rolling cycle. When they get reappointed after that, they'll be, everybody will be reappointed to three-year terms. The reason it's here is there's been a lot of discussion about the TIF committee. Three years ago, people didn't know what the TIF was for, how the money would be spent, what the potential of it was for. Uh, I think honestly, streaming meetings created a lot more attention around the um visibility of it, especially the pub on Main Street. People seeing what it could do um has generated a lot of interest. I actually have live applications in my desk for people to be on to the committee. Um, that's the only, other than that, we're begging people that are just willing to come and participate. And so I had mentioned this to you briefly in the email last week, but it's your pleasure as to whether or not you just want to say we're going to mass reappoint, or if you want to open up a window to allow people to apply to reexpress their interests and consider, you could expand the committee or you could just look at the membership as a whole and how you want to move ahead.
Is this a three-member committee now?
It's a seven-member committee.
And it's whole?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I've got people queued at the door that want to be on. I've had applications for probably twelve to eighteen months. I've been sitting on them. And I was at a fundraiser last night and I had somebody ask me about serving on the TIF committee and it's, it's crazy.
And the idea of the current numbers on the TIF committee wouldn't let to see happen?
I, they obviously could resign. We have pretty good attendance. I think they would all just want to be carried for.
How did they originally get appointed?
As far, they filled out the applications. The TIF committee specific application, not the volunteer committee application, and then they were wanted to three attempts.
But, but.
The slot.
Yeah. And we struggled to fill originally, correct?
Well, I think even I didn't, at that point, didn't really know what it was, and I'm assuming like if I didn't, then a lot of other people didn't, so I mean, now that there's sort of you know, more interest, there's more visibility with it, you know, I think it kind of makes sense to open it up and try to just like with our board, like every time you change it up, you kind of get a little.
You can choose who gets a three-year term and who's two and who's one, so I don't know.
I think that's a bit, I believe though that definitely, it's like, if we all opt left next year, you know, wouldn't know what was going on.
You have a vermin for the knees.
It, well. Well, sorry, they were saying that a, a business did one thing and it fell under the rules and then two years later, this is what do the same thing and they're like, I don't know, that doesn't make sense. It's like, well, we did it for somebody else two years ago, that type of thing. Um, but if you have that many people too I don't the five of us make a decision for the whole town. You, that's, I mean, you already can, you put that on a town vote for what? The re-electing.
Oh, I agree. You don't have to expand that.
You don't have to.
No, to be voted on. It's kind of unique.
Well, downfalls to expanding it to more people. You know, I mean, this, you start getting triggered, it doesn't make it tougher to manage, so it's the largest board that we have. So that amount, and how does that work? Has it been to once? How, I mean, does it work pretty well the way it is or?
I would say so. I wouldn't expand the board beyond seven. We've had um the downtown revitalization committee, when we developed that plan, the um engineering firm, that was in nine or eleven. You start getting to form troubles, like scheduling, things like that, um and then really just productive use of your time.
Yeah, I think it's true, I like to like kind of opening up applications and like starting from scratch and kind of deciding how to appoint with three, two, and one.
Because you don't have to go for a specific slot per se, do they, on their application?
No.
That can be based on.
Honestly, I would recommend if you get your people draw them out of hats and stuff like that. And just say, okay, here's your three-year term, here's your two-year term, here's one-year term.
Not a bad idea, right?
Can I still?
So please, we have.
I'm pretty about asking the people that are on the committee, if everybody wants to be on another three years. I'm not sure if that's true. He, yeah, I think we came up with a big learning curve, well, this, you know, nobody else wanted to, you know. We learned that I think people have been pretty dependable, but maybe everybody wouldn't do it again. For three years, I don't even know. They all fill the bill.
So I have a letter drafted in my office tucked in envelopes right now, just waiting to be sealed in stamps to go to existing members before goes public, if it was approved.
I was thinking before you think new people, what you see, when the old people stay. But that's a hassle. Yeah, they have them put in application as well, I guess, like. Not to be candid, just know what you're doing, well, there you go. Two people, three people, nobody.
Very true, very true, so certainly.
You don't want seven versions.
Oh, I have seven envelopes in my office on my printer that are intended to go out in tomorrow morning mail, if you move, because I had assumed maybe the board would to say, here's the application, here's the justification, and it's the letter, the couple letters in it.
Yeah. Maybe in that letter that goes out to the existing board members, do we maybe put like the application to reapply if you're interested in, you know, person, this? Yeah, like fill this back out, so basically like reapply for your job search, I mean.
Exactly what it's, yeah.
Yeah, and you've got a couple. I, I, I have been in full sport.
I think so too. What's our three-year term?
I actually, I usually don't, but I actually like the idea of either just pulling them from a hat or that's something random like that, because again, how do you pick and choose who gets what? So.
Well, I think the point was like something like, I, I can do one more, but after that, like, um, they might already
Almost resign.
self-select, I guess.
So we tell the board, yes, and they sign up for if I have your term.
We'll let them trade their ticket. You got a one, I want the one, you want a three here, I'll change.
We don't want to, it's a, you know, a three, it's like, I got one of them.
Yeah, probably re-up. That it's over. So the terms expire in April and my recommendation is going to be to have applications come back in before your last meeting in May, which would allow the TIF committee to be sent in time to their regular main meeting, so yes, terms of lapse April thirtieth technically, but there wouldn't be any active business before you do review the application. Right, so when they all reapply, they can state that I want to do it for one, two, or three. If they'd like, I can add that as a letter, if you have a preference on the term. We could put that in there. Okay, but honestly, it's not. Two people that want three-year term season.
I was just gonna say.
Those are easier, just to leave it.
Just to roll.
Whereas this is what we're going to, we're going to we need these twos and ones, get it staggered.
You would prefer a longer two-year, customary three, let us know, that way you can.
Okay, well, you want an official motion on that? Were you?
Yes, and no, we could get a motion because it's a little not typical that we would do this, but because of the interest of some, so the mode will be to open up to receive applications from member to the TIF advisory committee until
May eleventh. May eleventh, so moved.
Second, motion a second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is everybody. Okay, uh, discussion action on TIF committee recommendations.
Uh, so there are two items on, you're going to tonight under this section. Both were unanimously recommended uh by the TIF committee at their meeting. Once more, so I'm going to actually pump this one to clock. Deputy chief, to, I think, what I asked is, I will tell you that initially came to TIF committee as a request, excuse me, a request to reallocate funds previously approved. The TIF committee said, let's look at this transparently from public perspective and let's look at this as a new project. Rather than saying we're shifting money and things like that, so the automated hose walker.
Yeah.
With the previous request that's approved and approved by you uh is still on the table and still on approval list. This is now being treated as a new one with the unanimous recommendation of the TIF committee.
Thank you. So did Bridget put that in your packet? So maybe you've had a chance to read it, but but essentially it's asking for, ask the TIF committee and they approve, and Bridget said it was unanimous, April, April, uh, check, March twenty-eighth. So looking to buy six new portable radios. Right, and so these, it's actually what we're talking about. This thing doesn't, pretty much doesn't leave my side, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. It might be in the car sometimes, but it's never further than that. This one is eleven years old and it's actually the newest one. And it's, um, we have several others. I'm not saying that, that we don't have any radios that are that are newer, you do, but the ones in the officer and the full-time uh firefight ranks, the ones frankly get used the most. Uh, the um, these are HD twelve fifty, they're a commercial series radio kind of intended to be to get wet. Um, a, a little bit more running duty, if you will. Uh, we're looking to replace those um with new intrinsically safe units, so the, none of the radios that we have, this vintage are intrinsically safe, so they can actually be the source of ignition in a in a IDLH environment like um propane gas environment or something, they could, they could actually be the source of ignition. They're also as waterproof as they once were, they're, they're not waterproof. We've had a couple instances lately of destroying some radio equipment because, you know, finally get wet, kind of is what it is. So we went to the TIF committee. We asked for their support for um a lump sum purchase of um six radios and they, they approved up to ten thousand. Uh, and then so it'd be a two-part request. I'd ask you um back their recommendation and approve that, and the second part of the request would be uh, I'm, I'm not interested in going out to bid on that. We have a long-term uh radio vendor that we use that maintains all of our equipment and, you know, we we would look to use housing communications for that, uh, with lock. And then the, kind of the last part, we're not looking to throw these away. We can reuse them in, in other areas, traffic control and some, some non-frontline functions that we can use it for, so. You might ask why that doesn't show up on our capital expenditure list that we maintain. Some of you new people probably haven't seen it. Uh, first of all, that's due for an update. We're going to do that in our next office meeting, and then secondly, um, we've never actually considered buying six radios at once before. We've always onesie, twosied at the end of the, the budget year. Uh, and therefore didn't qualify as a, as a, uh, large purpose on capital plan sheet. We'll have to rethink that when we update the sheet, but this will be the first time we've ever spent ten thousand dollars on radio equipment and so that's why it's not. Well, ask for your support. Any questions?
I just wanted to be the only one I had.
I think them all. Thank you.
All right, so we will take a motion on that.
I move that we approve the TIF funding request for the portable radios, the amount of ten thousand up to the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Say, more than a second, I see. Further discussion?
And a motion for them to move forward with Hasi as their contractor versus going out to bid.
That is happening. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I thought it was rare. Yeah, that's pretty funny. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, building. Yeah, but the, the next item is uh the sponsorship of Bill's Maine. It's a municipal sponsorship, Bill Maine of the two-day conference, so it's got, uh, that deals a lot with, I'll say, more research, you know, more organizations for profit, non-profit, um, people that are moving main floor, economic development. The opportunity exists for us in the neighboring community. It's six hundred dollars um to be featured in that in your electronic packets. I believe you had a copy of the or a link to the website so you can see what the events can be taken up to be. Um, so we'll include our name and logo listed on all of their email, communication, social media posts on their website, in the program book, et cetera. It will also give an unlimited number of tickets for town employees, select board members, planning board members, uh, and whatnot there. Um, the committee was uh unanimous in their recommendation to approve six hundred dollars.
It's great, and I would be appreciative of six hundred dollars for uh the build named. President, I would make you approve the six hundred dollars for, uh, the Bill Maine. Yes, project.
Second, good motion second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, motion biggest, that's everybody. Bruce, oh, Bruce, sorry.
I just, uh, wondered what. What we would gain from that, I, I know it's not a lot of money, but, um, just wondered what, how, how the town would. Benefit from joining that.
So it's strictly, uh, marketing, community marketing, visibility, support thing. Um, economic development is how it's kind of looking, it's a resource for folks that are in our community that could find there to be a value. Uh, if the TIF Committee, the LACD Committee meeting, there were people that were there that had actually attended and found things to benefit for them as well. Um, some are all segments of the program, so, um, it's a visibility thing from the town, so we're supporting that, but also a resource to. People in our community and our region as, as organizational leaders and business owners.
I.
I'm kind of moving up with that benefit is better than the first part agreement that we had a long time ago.
Yeah.
The first part agreement that we had with Oakland. Hasn't really paid great dividends to town or.
This is the one time.
So, so I'm just, I'm kind of with her opening up, I hope it does better for the town than. That agreement.
This is a one-time, it's not a recurring thing, it's a one-time sponsorship, it's like taking an ad out. At the ball field.
Okay.
Take a T-shirt.
So, it's fair enough.
And whereas first part is on the taxpayers of Norwood, you know, you have a million dollars, it's nineteen ninety-nine.
And we've got not much for our money.
No, we've lost almost a half a million dollars.
There you go.
Goodbye factor. Almost.
Okay.
I think that pretty basic.
Yes, yes.
But solid questions. Back to Bridget, yeah.
Yeah, some sort of advertising. Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, moving forward, uh, discussion. Action on, um, local. Grants and views, yeah, what do you got?
Local.
Yes, okay, so, uh. Carers, we changed it from social services because a lot of what these organizations and category do, it's not social service. Uh, so we're looking for a middle format in those grants, uh, which makes it cleaner on our end with expectations. In your preliminary packet, I think. Today, you've got the spreadsheet that we use lack, you're evaluating, um, organizational. Uh, involvement in our community, so when I reach out, the organization break out to me, if they get to me before I get to them. I respond to them and I give them all the same. Are you in Norwood, do you offer service to the people of Norwood, do you offer the service to the town of Norwood? Have you provided me with an audit report, finally a statement? Uh. How many people do you serve in the community, how many people do you, how much is the estimated cost of that? Um, and then you get organizations are responsive, and then you get organizations that, it's like, I started to do my letter and I auto fills the name of the town and your address. And pretty clear by the level of responsiveness. Uh. So we've got some information in the part, some not in the part, um. The top three are administrative. Um, requests, those have been long-scrummed Memorial Day, typical funds Memorial Day activities, which is far and long. Uh, they're not going to be anything this year unless it's volunteers, except for to do that. That was one of those things that came out of lack here, was that if folks want to do that, it just can't be on staff constantly to do that, but then we would be supportive of that. The grave flags, that's, we're actually paying that bill tonight, so hopefully you would approve that. And then your downtown flags, that's been pulled back drastically just because with the, um, sidewalk maintenance project this year and next, we're not. Going to be putting up. We're gonna have four bottles for two years, so pretty much that's gonna keep the veterans' monuments and town buildings in the blackness. Uh, moving down through the Mason's Bikes for Book Pro, Bikes for Books Program. That is right here, eleven, a lodge, they customarily ask for a hundred dollars, the cost of everything's going up, those are rewarded to the kids at Middle Street School. Uh, they have, you know, quantified everything to bear responsiveness, all local, that's during that organization. Uh, the Sportsman's Association, they've increased their request to three thousand dollars this year. Um, from typical two thousand, they have been responsive to all of our requests for information. Now, the Historical Society, uh, did not submit a request for support this year, uh, there for a variety of reasons, I believe. Uh. In my column over on the right, so that green column or gray column that you're seeing in your deck. I kind of put some numbers in there to how it play out. I did leave a placeholder for the Historical Society, five hundred dollars. My thinking is that it's a small. Gesture to an organization that's, we've always supported, if you give them a zero this year, next year, it's gonna be, well, why did we get nothing next year? That next year, last year, and they're here asking again. Uh, I know that they were the beneficiary of an estate, I know that they get a lot of private donations and a lot of the major projects have. Been passed over, but they're also a good cooperative partner with the town, historic research, preservation, Sophie May Library, um, so. To me, I wouldn't want to see that just drop off. Personal, but also the town impact stuff there, the main antique tractor club, we've customarily just kind of paid dues out of this, a donation to them. But they do do a lot in our community, they're, uh, credited with two days with their, um. Turning barrel training, like really popular with the kids, they're also investing a huge amount of money here, um, in Norwood, they've got up behind the Madhouse.
Yes, yes.
They've got that, they are building a tractor museum. And they are taking on a mortgage pay. Um, and so they bring hundreds of people in. Weekends in the summer, and it's kind of a unique thing where that antique tractor club is here. They did not submit a request, but. In my personal opinion, as a nonprofit organization, they have a great impact in our community, and a thousand dollars from the town of Norwood. To help them out with their mortgage or whatever else they have to expense this year, um, and I think is worth it, and we've got a lot of young people. Uh, wakes up involved in that, there's quite a few young people that.
Well, I think some weekends, they're bringing thousands, yeah, this is.
On every, on every. Weekend down here, that, that deal is poor, it's impressive, I never thought it would fall out, but it does.
But, so candidly, they did not ask for anything, but we've given to them in the past, so I put something there. The KB cap transportation, they requested fifteen hundred dollars, we have given to them in the past. Um, I didn't put anything in there, that money could also come from TIF because it is the on the best transportation TIF. Um, or you could allocate funds from this, main public has asked for a hundred dollars, they were non-responsive to our request. The mid main chamber of commerce, um, candidly, that's already been expensed, if that doesn't get approved out of this budget, I'll just pull it out of admin. Um, hospice of Somerset County. They were moderately responsive to us, kind of at behavioral health. Um, they were responsive on our request letter, dialing their services at sixty-five thousand. Children's Center, Somerset Economic Development, they do a lot of work with our small businesses, finding them all, their financing, grants, things like that. That's a simple one hundred dollars, Jeff McGowan, I think is representative from Norwood that serves on their board. Community Health and Counseling, Crisis and Counseling, the Lifeline Foundation, and Northern Life Home Care. I don't want to get into the personal end of all of this stuff, but some of it impacts the town and some of it doesn't, a lot of these things to me just, um. Is a cookie cutter ask, and if you're not willing to disclose your financial reports with us, that's a struggle for me as well. So, and what gets reimbursed privately or not.
Do, do we like set aside like X amount, honey, to like?
You have, you have seven thousand dollars, there is this year.
Do we have the ability to, I mean, because I can see the total here is sixty-three ninety-five. For ones that we maybe wanted to give more to versus some of the ones that just.
You can move around, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah. I, you know, some of the things like their rate services, but feel like our state tax dollars are paying for a lot of that stuff, you know? I don't know if like the town stuff necessarily needs to. Like the crisis and counseling stuff, or, I mean, even like the hospice, if they're not, you know, doing that extra legwork and providing that other elimination. And that is already funded by the Norwood taxpayers for their state taxes, I'm sure.
I, I myself, I'm totally comfortable with Richard's list, I mean, I'm a little harsh there, but, you know. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go with what Richard has selected on your bottom right-hand side.
I'm, so this is my first time doing this, obviously, and was surprised, this isn't even a thing. And particularly surprised to see like KBH on there and crisis and counseling. And. Being a high school teacher and seeing. The issues there around mental health and recent events in our own community around mental health, I don't. I don't know how we could not. Pitch in, in those efforts, especially if they're estimating it's benefiting that many and that amount of value of services. Particularly, you're looking at KBH. And with Richard starting stating that this used to be social services. I gotta, I don't want to get away from that intent that was initially. Service-based for people in our community. But that, that's my piece, so I, I'm saddened to see on Richard's list. Those organizations not highlighted.
Now, or the, or can, uh. The ones in this list, do they all have a direct reflect on Norwood? You know, like the, like crisis and counseling, I'm not familiar with that, is that like an Augusta thing, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
That would be like our Norwood residents can call crisis and counseling, they have mobile triage groups that they talked about in their letter, where they could come. Here. I know, I'm a baby fifty-four, works with KBH. There's a great need at the school for more of those services. Um. I, I, KBH, I think is, they probably have an office in Scott Gigan, correct me if I'm wrong, but like that's. I, I don't know of a counseling service we have in Norwood.
Right.
And, um, so like where, where else do they go, you know, I, I get that they're not based in Norwood, but that's. Serving Norwood residents. So I would just, I would like to see at least one of those, particularly KBH, I was even gonna say I want to give more money to KBH, but. I would at least like to grant the six hundred to KBH that they ask, even if it is a cookie cutter, it just doesn't sit well with me. With what I know about mental health in our community. To not be shown that we're in support of the non-life marketing.
Do you have anything that shows like what we gave last year, like, or some of these, like, is it dependent, usually we'll have like what we gave last, and we put it in our budget.
Uh, well, and that's why a lot of. Of I just didn't include. Because we haven't. Given to them recently. So KBH is right here, line twenty, give me just one second.
But we've never been approached or never given it to the crisis.
They ask every year, and so this is back to two thousand and four?
Yep.
So it looks like in, we were giving a hundred dollars a year to KBH.
Yep.
And now.
Would it be beneficial going forward to have a representative from some of those come in and speak? As to why or what they're asking the money for. I mean, if they're willing to send somebody, this has been in the past, what I have found, if they're willing to send somebody in to fight for the money.
So we extended that offer. Teaching them in the standard letter, now it wasn't always the case.
Right.
That, we started that last year.
Yep.
Um, because prior to last year, we. It was two years ago now, it was really, uh, we were almost pitting social services against each other, organizations against each other. Paul was in the same location, in the same building, and said, remove that, um. And so then it just became a plot of wanting for the board to allocate, and then that's when it was kind of after that, they already submitted their request letters. So I have a fact letter of them asking for all this information, and they did or didn't respond, and because of them. Responding or not. Kind of this guided.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what it was, probably was, uh. You go to town million, town meeting, you go to town meeting and you, and you take about forty minutes allocating two million bucks. And then another forty minutes arguing over. One of them's on the back.
Yep.
And a bunch of us, it wasn't just me, said, this is not right. Put a process in place, put a budget in place, and let a smaller group of people decide, which is, you know, you pass two million dollars in no time, and then. It just. Didn't make sense. So now you have that smaller group of people.
Probably understood.
Do we have like a philanthropic grant fund, or like what, where does that?
This is just seven thousand dollars, great.
That would be, that would be, we reapprue that, seven thousand.
So if we didn't allocate all the seven thousand, where does that money go back to the general fund, or?
What was her addition, you know, and you burned just about all of it. Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's my thing, is half of these are. Like social service type deal, you know, right?
I mean, except, except sports was close, you know.
Yeah, no, really, you know, I mean, yes, we're all a little part of it, but, uh. Yeah, I mean. You know, it's the, like, the community health and counseling, the crisis counseling, Northern Home Care, I, you know, I personally don't know what they all. Hmm. You know, I. Don't know, right?
I don't, generally I wouldn't unless you.
I mean, like.
Their services.
Yeah, but I want to call. Right. And has a statewide, you know, county, town, I don't know, I'd like, like, I feel. That not getting into them, but I really ignorant to the whole. There's six of them, you know.
Right, yeah.
I just wonder why we haven't done it before either, too, like that's, I mean, like, we've never. Done that, but not to say that we can't like change things up, um, but then it does seem like a. One of the, well, the biggest, um, and that's bringing, like, we've never put that, I'm guessing that they put stuff in before, like, every year, but we just don't get any sort of. You know, response back, is that what it is, like? Like, whenever you're filming, probably giving out something, hey, you know what you're giving the money for, the reason for, or it's not just that we send out an email asking everybody for money, sort of thing.
So they sent their letter on November fourteenth, I then sent the follow-up letter seeking more information, primarily finances, and they didn't respond to that. Uh, and, and I do that, I mean. Everybody's kind of been around the block, but there's a form nine ninety, and I didn't dig into it, because I didn't know what we're gonna get into tonight, but. You've got organizations, they're not asking, so I'll say, like Spectrum Generations, who funds those on this. They're always asking for money and they're. A worthy organization, but they're sitting on six million dollars a cat.
Yeah.
You know, everybody's multiple, it's not their pocketbook for that, and then how much is getting reimbursed from the main care or something like that? You, you don't know, but that's what it is with any organization, it's not just a healthcare organization.
I thought we had talked about that last year, though, that, that was our process, that like, if they wanted something, that they had to provide all that information. Didn't we talk about that last year?
We did, but we, we just said we were gonna. We were gonna look, we were asking everybody for information, and then we were.
Making that required, though. Okay.
And I do like this chat piece, seeing this for the first time, it does, you know, immediately raise some of those questions, if, you know, they're in town, out of town, how they kind of operate. Well, like you all said, it would be good for somebody to be able to come and present and give you a bit of a more people they lose here, uh.
Would you like me to send a notification for, uh, KBH to come and talk to each next regular?
Oh, I really, they're communities, if they, you know what I mean, uh. But falls, it's not, uh, we need them at any special or specific time. But any of those looking to seek further funding from us, they would certainly benefit from taking a tribute, to present their case and their need, uh.
Or at least a letter from them explaining. What they're using the money for and things like that, what the benefit is to Norwood for that. So we can always. I mean, I, I agree with that, I mean, they are worthy, they are worthy places, and we do have a lot of folks in town that benefit from these services. Uh, and they're usually the folks that can afford to.
And again, I know, I, I even think we could argue that Norwood Sportsman is like a preventative mental health thing, you know what I mean, like getting outside and all that. But I just, I, again, I didn't know this was a thing, and to see some of those organizations on there, and then now we're looking at it that like those aren't the ones that we're looking to support. I would, if this is money we have, seven thousand dollars each year, like. How do we support an organization or encourage them to apply in an appropriate way, so that some of that money does go towards mental health, like I know. Like I also sit on a, a Somerset County, um, like. Suicide Prevention Group, and like, we do Pizza for a Purpose to raise money, to do events and awareness and get services and stuff like that, and there are clubs at the school. Who are really trying to advocate for mental health. I just see it as a great need. And would love to see Norwood rock, support people in the community, and maybe there's a way to support people more directly than through KBH, like people right here. Than through KBH, like people right here. I don't know, but. Just would have been remiss not to share those thoughts.
Okay, do. Certainly, uh. Maybe for this second, this season, I I do we want to, uh. Make a motion with a change to include, uh, certainly within our budget, you know what I mean? It doesn't change anything. There's no great action that we in there other than just to add it, uh, to the list aside.
And then we can either write, we tell the useful, uh, set aside some time to look at this and decide exactly what we want to see and how we want to see it. So people can open themselves up for some more funding, uh.
Yeah, I just am not like. Money not spent is not like it's money just like wasted. It's not like, you know, federal grants and stuff like that. It's still like taxpayer money that goes back in the general fund, you know? How how we've been doing it before and what we've been allotting just because we said the seven thousand there like. We spent four, like it's not, I mean. It's still taxpayer money. So I just want to make sure that. Not having any of the financial information, you know, are we taking taxpayer money that could be used for something else and giving it to something that doesn't really need our like help because they have giant endowments or something? I would. I would just rather know.
Well, sure, sure.
The inflation of everything is so much more expensive.
Pack it in here. My thing is we stop, you stop doing it. The board back in two thousand sixteen, whatever that thing said, I'm sure why, you know, what? You know, I don't know why. At least I haven't been around that long, so there could be a reason why I stopped going to the night. Well, it goes through board and budget committee. And if they don't get through board and budget committee, they don't get to the board.
Right.
I just, I'll add a paper and a different number of readers off the.
Obviously, you know, requested.
Yeah, I yeah, I don't know.
Can I ask?
Fire.
Thanks for Minnesota to come for the food pantry. How is that paid for?
You can't pay through the work of their. Food cover and I think with support from the congregation church.
Excellent. And Norwich Rock is not supporting any food covered. Entity at this time. And when so, we're indefinitely.
Yeah, they, we didn't even approach them about coming here. They are, they service how even as well. On a more regular schedule than they are here and they were noticing the people from Norwich Rock that were going there because it's closer than the pantry and the house. And so they called me and asked me if I could find a location to, uh, call inside the school park. It's off the road, it's central, it's walkable. And I've only heard good things so far. I mean, I've I've only heard positive, so.
I guess, because a couple of people asked at the library this weekend. Because it was. They've seen it there. And people still put in firm money for this? Leave my job for a minute and speak on the KBH thing.
For.
Uh, I came here from KBH twenty years ago. And. They did ask every year to come in and speak and they were told. Many years ago. They didn't need to come in and speak. But my job there was as an intake worker. I know that there wasn't enough services for the people that needed the services. So. For that little bit of money that you're going to give them, they're not going to be able to, even if they come to talk to you, which they've offered to do in the past. They're not going to be able to tell you. That that money is going to go to a Norwich Rock resident for any specific thing. And I mean, it's a big pot thing. I feel like they stopped. There because they felt like some of the money was misspent, so. But.
That's just.
All right.
All right. So the board want to table this and wait and open it up and see some more? Do we want to act on what we have in front of us? And then see how we do for next season. Time to get on. Discretion. I'm more than comfortable moving forward with her addition. You would just need to include it in your motion. Uh. Other than that, a motion to table. Very good. Right. You know, maybe Richard upset. I I made a note here, I don't know. What I guess I didn't tell you was that the schools is coming to visit you soon and Westman is coming to visit you soon. Um.
Who is?
Westman.
Who's the person?
The superintendent, yes, just gonna come pre-buddy podcast, um. So we can send an invitation somewhere like KBH. Obviously, you're passionate about it.
I am, and I feel comfortable accepting the list you have, knowing that I'm comfortable about mental health. No, I'm sorry, I'm passionate about it. I'm not comfortable without it, by any means, um. And if people can still put in requests for.
Third name.
Yeah, some grant money, then I'm. I'm even comfortable like connecting with people and saying, hey, if you need support or that sort of thing. And help them.
This way the money, five bucks, there's not much left there in the pot.
Yeah.
So.
Please, whatever.
Are are you saying that you might? Spend four thousand of it tonight and then have three thousand left and people come in. Were you tabling it so it's open?
You, that that will be a downwards plan, but that is an option as well.
No, just trying to understand.
Yeah, it's 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 after boards.
That's what you're discussing right now.
Yes.
Yes.
So on the other side, which one thing I just said, there was the value of services. Like you did, it does list the number. Where does that number come from? Did they supply?
They had approximated that in their request letter and that was based. Two, I just had it out.
It's like sixty five, six one nine.
Uh, they had based it on an average. Oops, an average per, uh. Patient. And then they proportioned it into our one hundred and seventeen Norwich Rock residents. Whether that's unique residents or whatnot, I can't, I don't have that information. I tried to find that out and I couldn't. And then they fixed that into the value of. What they say is under insured or no insured, then they fix a per. Resident or capital charge that they ask, and that's where they came up with their six hundred. So really the six hundred request isn't tied to the. Benefit served, it's just tied to the purpose.
I just wish that, I mean, we had talked about it so much like last year. I just wish we had like made it more.
Cool.
It like. With everything with us, whenever there's any sort of subjectivity that can be had, we need to be able to always pass like the straight face test, like did we? Do everything the same for this one? Because if another organization comes along, that's. Every single one of these are worthy, you know, we want to make sure that we've given every single person the exact same opportunity. And also hold them up to the exact same expectations of, you know, information returned back to us. I think that we have to be pretty. Black and white with that, just so that it's fair, because if someone comes a month from now, we don't have enough money, they ask for nine hundred dollars. But we've already spent it. Like, I think we have to keep it exactly the same every time so that we don't. End up. In the pickle.
I agree, I agree. And then I look at this and like, we're gonna give. Was it fifteen? I don't know, for. People who didn't even ask for money.
That I was literally waiting to make that point.
So.
Again. So it it is right, your own personal bias does come into this, um, just based on, right, we're. Putting more value on the. Uh, anti tracker club.
And I agree, they're all, I want to give them all money, um.
And they were reached out to and they just showed no interest in wanting to put any, that's what I think that we should do here before we just give them money, like. I don't know, I just like someone asked like, could I please? And like, if you're gonna just give them money, because we don't have to give them. I mean, they would cover seven grand, cover, you know, seventy percent of their new radios that they need.
I don't want to be insensitive to it, but. A lot of these nonprofit organizations. Have individuals whose sole job it is, is to come to municipal bodies and ask for money. And that's it.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what you get. And there are some of those people that are more responsive than others. Other than that, the second week of November, they often do their letter. And then, so I've just tried to, it will never be black and white. You want it to be in the worst way and that's of course this comes, but this isn't going to take into account. A disproportionate number of individuals in the community who saw mental health issues or. Uh. The involvement of the Norwich Rock Historical Society in our community versus. The a lot of historical society and what that does in account of fortunate sounds, you're never gonna be able to do that. But. There are people that are more responsive than others. And that's really what it amounts to. And I guess. I would encourage you to pull money aside for somebody like KBH. They're a watermill, they're in Scotty and both service centers for this community. We know that they're involved. Let's invite them in. And see what they have to say. And then maybe they're going to be back on that list. Of people that we want to give to and they're gonna ask for six hundred bucks and we want to give them a thousand next year, who knows? But let's get one fair date and. Invite them and we've got plenty of time and I don't think our six hundred dollars is gonna make or break them if it's the December thirty first, we'll write them a check. Develop a relationship with some people like that because we. We have people who protect it, but it's a can't come to the town office because of mental health. So it's a real problem. We we were talking about it before we came to this. So it's just unfortunate reality.
I can't motion just to set aside.
If the money doesn't, like we accept the six thousand three hundred ninety five as you've outlined it here. And the money doesn't like then go into that general fund and we lose access to it for KBH or another service, um. I I'd say just make a motion and accept it as it is and then. If we can work with KBH and find out if they want to submit all their info or chat with us, we can. Allocate that afterwards. If that's okay.
That's for sure. And just, you know. Lose these pieces if you didn't apply, you know what I mean? Which would rule out the historical society, uh, the historical society and the attractive ones. Sorry about that. Uh, but that would just reduce it by fifteen hundred, which would really be, uh. And if you're going. Based on.
I just like to be able to say that we did the, I think, for this group of people that we did for this group of people.
And if we're saying no to people who did apply. For other reasons. So without imposing our own personal biases or like the historical society, uh, which I am the supporter of.
Yeah.
Um. Just also, you can't really give them that one at the straight race test, right? Okay, you didn't really apply. So I, I mean. I'm more than comfortable with just going with the people that we did, which is the top of our list for the sportsman club, uh. Uh. Also, our mid main chamber of commerce. And then right economic development, they ask. Yes. Those would all fall and that still leaves us, uh, what, twenty one hundred to play with in that. Good people.
And like I would.
And yes, yes.
Just encourage them to send something in, you know.
Right, Richard will reach back out, uh, and then again, we could lend them over more than the six hundreds, uh.
Yeah. I just think that you kind of gave it to everybody, like. Would end up. At the point where, how can you say no to one and not the other? And then you start giving people twenty five bucks because now we can't say no to any, you know what I mean? Like.
No, I agree. Should be a little.
On that, uh, few dollars. Forty eight ninety five, forty eight ninety five.
Move the forty eight ninety five to the. Previously spoken organizations.
Is it not public knowledge?
Uh, I we, I mean, I can listen right off, we back, we both like. Uh, you've got the Memorial Day, the gray flags, uh, the downtown flags. Uh, Mason's, Bikes for Books, uh, the Norwich Sportsman's Club, uh, and then down to the Mid Main Chamber, which is our, uh, annual fee with them. And, uh, summer, uh, Somerset Economic Belt. Uh, the sportsman's club getting the largest chunk of that, three thousand. Everybody was supposed to.
Three thousand?
Oh, yeah, for the sportsman's club, yeah.
Just want to make sure that we really reach back out like with historical society and track the club and make sure that we are. Doing our diligence to use the money wisely that's left over so we can, you know.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is a paper. Getting this everybody.
Well. I could have been on the floor and I didn't.
But you see what it's actually now meeting by, and forty five more people just waiting and never fights for your speed, um.
It's usually just like church.
It's still, uh, yeah, so you feel bad, I say, and this is the end of the stuff for sure. Uh, so yes, moving forward, especially action on IT service request.
Well, we have been with Smoke on Technology Group for, uh, three or four years, I would say. Uh, we have a great relationship with them, but we've been approached by a local vendor, um, in preference meeting proposal. So I had drafted, uh, an RFP, it's difficult because we're a small town, so we're not looking for everything. Uh, but we're pretty much, we're looking for our existing services being. Uh, you know, monitoring antivirus protection, path management, routine software manager. The option for cloud backup, we currently don't use it, the cost prohibitive for us as a small community. Um, and then the onsite and remote assistance of our method. So and then how we break that out, how we're going to hopefully look at it in apples and oranges. Um, is going to be an apple to apples, more than oranges, is the hourly rate for remote work, hourly rate onsite work. The rate charge for travel, if there's any, the per device. Cost for the basic management services. The cost for optimal cloud backup per unit. And explanation of their experience, our most difficult system in the house is trio, trio web is actually a new version of that. Um, and then any other municipal experience references. Um, the people that would serve us, a list of them and their resume. Uh, ideally with one municipal reference and then anything else that they might suggest of options for us to improve our operations. That's what they will look like. So pretty much move to go all the damage, how much you're gonna charge us now, how much your experience working with people like us.
Is we just looking for a request while other towns have.
Send this out.
Like.
I mean.
Yeah, so I move that we, um, move forward with the town requesting proposals for information technology services.
Yeah. Hold on a second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, a little favor. That's it. If there are anybody in the run or online that knows of a vendor, uh, that they would want us to send that to, please reach out to the town office. As soon as you possibly can and we'll get a hard copy packet and electronic pack over to them. Discussing action on roadside request. Right, so this is, uh, very similar to last year's RFP for roadside model. Like they remember, maybe, maybe not, we had two proposals, they were quite different in price. We took the lowest responsive bidder, uh, which come to find out wasn't. Responsive, uh, we only had half of the contract executed. They came in, they did the first cut, they moved the cemetery. The back sevenish acres of Sunset Cemetery and it didn't come back for a big season long. So we saved some money, they took a soaking. Uh, and so we need to find a new contractor to do this with Rick Drew, who was the guy that we piggybacked with on the state. Uh, who did a really good job for us at a very nice price, has passed away, uh, and so we need to find somebody new. So let's say you need. Business, we've got great little roadside mileage that we didn't like terms. Uh, we're going to have a little bit on final terminals, um, but we need to try to find somebody else. And so with that, I will say once again, if anybody that'd be interested in potentially providing the services of roadside mode, please refer to us. And we need to make sure that we get this in check. My.
In that, in that contract, five year. In behind the guardrails. Was that part of the contract five year is like. Grinding, buying the company, guardrails and stuff like that because. I I feel like we do a good, you know, we address the ditches well, but. Look at any of our guardrails. We've got some bush problems. So I think that that ought to be maybe. Put into the contract going forward that that is addressed or. Separated out.
All more separated out.
Sometimes they have to say something, you know. But I think that if we're gonna take time to more roadside, we really ought to address the. What's behind, behind the guy.
Uh. Highway ticket. Was that outside the law, state open, state would. This is just town.
But I don't think it has anything to do with. Our highway rules not.
Yeah.
Responsible that technically, I get exactly, and the maintenance behind the guardrail fall on them.
It does.
Falls on the town.
Okay.
We have been eliminating our brush cutting exposure.
Yes.
Someone. It's not the paper, it's not miles of garden. I will explore cutting behind guardrails. I, it's either a different crew or it is going to be a different piece of equipment.
And true, but I think we are like some of that because it's getting, they are getting, a lot of them are getting old grown. And and I don't think. It's proper, I I I'm apprehensive about spending our money. Have my guys do it because they already have enough to do and. Chainsaws on the hands cost money. So. I I like to explore that.
Good point.
Yeah.
Listen, brother to the road advisory.
I'm afraid of resigning because you said it cool.
No, that's good. Uh, you need some more. Motion to issue the RFP for roadside.
So moved.
Second, we'll wait in a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, a little favor. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Yep, uh so part of security, network security is converting to a dot gov domain. We'll never add it as long as it's been an obstacle. Administrative obstacle, if you will, uh so anyway, I'm gonna bite this one and try to get into it. Uh anyway, I need a letter of authorization from the chair of the board, there's no authority to use. Uh so what would be when we're all setting up these processes to not be town, they like call it New York one dot gov. And then we get all the assistance from Caesar and all of the other. Federal technical, um protections and securities there, so.
So I move that we allow that letter to be sent.
Seeing none, all those in favor? To everybody, uh other business.
You have two proposals in front of you, of folks that were responsible, of course, cared about two and fifth week. Uh we could have held this, uh I think it's wise given the seasonality of it. I don't wanna go long in terms of weight to strike our process. You have a posh fine line in the Herman and Lucas out of Reed Field, uh there's a significant price difference here. Uh on the fine line, you've got the apartment is Ward Hill, uh the. Part to do the center of double yellows and the outside whites is eighty eight seventy. If you only do the center yellow, it's forty sixty five and actually for equity, that's twenty two cent per linear foot. On Lucas striping the same double yellow down the middle is fourteen cents per linear foot. If you want to continue to strike Ward Hill Road. And then we have the package for crosswalks, parking lots, the speed table and then the teardrop and stop bar at Frederick Corner Room. Um the total including Ward Hill on Lucas striping is fifty forty one eighty, um which. Doesn't even begin to touch the eight thousand six fifty proposed by Fine Line to strike Town Office downtown from the corner. So the two things here is A, no matter what you do, it's gonna be over five thousand and B, do you wanna continue with Ward Hill Road?
What was determined back to be that to begin with, just the residents up there or we? Because I don't remember, I don't think we addressed it at the road, on the road treaty level, I don't think I see.
We had all that, oh, multiple. Lot of events, but I mean, there was just.
There is more traffic up here, man, it's our most traveled town that we have.
Pavement, it was, I mean, everybody had been up, it was a pain to drive if it was. Wet with the fresh pavement, if it was foggy, you couldn't see at all and with the small shoulder, it just. When it was brought up, it only made sense to have at least the white line on the outside is that, you know, you've got that. Right, just so it's why they kind of keep an eye on.
And it is well traveled, like I said.
Has anybody checked, see Skip just brought, I don't, I don't think white lines are bad over Ward Hill.
So we have just the double yellow.
Right.
At eight, at fourteen cents a foot.
It it, I mean, I know, I mean, to try to pen it in on that if it needs it, but if like Skip said, if we can skip here on the white. Address it every year. As to what it means, I mean, you live, you live there, and you could do some.
Well, I checked it coming in and it, I mean, it's faded, it's definitely faded, uh I agree with Matt, I think. With the narrower shoulders and stuff now, having that reference line for people. Um is beneficial, especially when you can't see anything. Cause everything just blends in and you have no idea where you are in the road if you get fogged or.
And also Madison, Madison's yellow lines are in it. And it's a continuation, it's really a continuation of what Madison's done.
They're continuing us.
But if, you know, to be driving an automobile and all of a sudden have that line coming with it, it's like, wow, what happened?
Is this something that, I mean, with the road committee, they have so much more knowledge of like. What it should be, what it needs, like, can we kick this to them? Maybe we defer to them, so like, which one do they, what do they wanna do? So I move that we take the road committee's recommendation and do the yellow lines at the lowest estimates, because out of all these companies are award law based.
So that translates into a motion from me to accept the pricing from Lucas Striping LLC in the amount, estimated amount of fifty forty one eighty. For the double yellow line stripe on Ward Hill Road in the downtown work. Do you have anything else? We did receive a lot from the Taylor, she wanted to thank the board for pulling the new spirit of America. And to write up, which was lack of the writer, it was in the town report. And then I feel like there's something else. I do, okay. And then the other thing was, a number of complaints have come in on River Road. Will pick your concerns, uh but it's not our responsibility to shoulder in and around saying that it was all, you know, is. Substantial, uh and so we had a couple people rack up cards up this weekend, I now three times submitted requests to the state to fill them in. It is what it is, I encourage anybody that's got a concern about it to go online, contact a DOT region and send an online thing to region three and they. Track the metrics of the response and be surprised if it leads.
But could you also, where's Steady Road, could you send our crew down to fix it and send them a bill?
No.
Okay, just, just.
Because I do that, I do that every time. And we already cut back some dangerous sections.
Trying to fix the problem, if they got a bill, they might. They may not pay it, but at least they.
They'd be happy you did.
All right, uh the only thing I have is junkyards, right, uh. They just seem to keep falling by the wayside and I, it just irritates me, uh. There's no need, we have a full time code enforcement officer, uh I I don't know what happens once we cited, I don't, I don't care if they fall apart in the force system. They need to go there, uh it's. We we do all this and then we have teeth, we have no follow up, where you get your first initial summons and then you wait five years and I have to look at it, you have to look at it. And then in five years, you get another summon for another thirty five dollar fine, uh but we all have to continue to look at it. I mean, well, you have to live next to one of these places, uh so yeah, I I think it's time that code gets back on to junkyards. I I think we need a running list so that the board is aware of the twelve or fourteen junkyards that and more. Uh that keep popping up here in town and the enforcement and where they are and and where they stand in that process of getting cleaned up. I mean, you don't have to pay for trash in this town, uh. Mind boggling, the amount of junkyards and I mean really junkyards or chalk jobs that are popping up here that really. With a full time code, I think we can get a handle on, and I don't know if it takes. A full motion from the board to keep this moving forward or just a simple nudge over to code that. Says, hey, we wanna reprioritize this, uh and get it cleaned up.
Can you define junkyard?
Three unregistered motor vehicles on our property, uh any piles of scrap. We got rid of our local junkyard ordinance a couple of years ago because the state had more teeth than theirs. Um it, like Matt alluded to, the court systems backed up and they don't really care about our bark and dogs, they don't care about our junkyards and people like that. It needs to be a more concerted effort, I mean, I've already started a spreadsheet for you and just on the top of my mind, the properties. That are junkyard eligible and that's not, I didn't, I don't think I have an, I have one or something. No, no, you can have all the reference you want, it's it's frustrating and so what I'd like and we'll hopefully roll this out to you uh at the next. Meeting and maybe once a month we'll take a look at it, but there you go, there's thirteen junkyards that I can just name right off the top of my head. Some of them are more than junkyards, some of them are post outfits and so we've had action on all of these, um and these are. People online can't see this, but they're alphabetical by street and then by house number, just so they're random, but these are all properties that have issues that need to be addressed. And so I've asked code already to say, when did we get initial report on this junkyard? When was that notice violation issued, when was the last time we went out there, you know, pictures, photographic updates, are they making progress? We're not taking anybody before, if they're showing progress.
No, no, just keep taking a car and we talk from that property.
So I have a question, when it comes to the like the junk. Do we have like any sort of caveats where it's, if it's visible from the road or visible to your neighbor? Like if people have, I I hope for us personally, I mean, we've got those twenty two acres and we definitely have a scrap metal pile, but. None of our neighbors can see it and you can't see it from the road, so do we all of a sudden fall into that and now we've gotta worry about getting rid of all that, even though it's. Are we looking at it from like an eyesore nuisance to the town or are we looking at just you? Yeah, I, that's what I'm wondering, do we have those things in place?
Now, are those, are those things that are complaints from townspeople or something, you where the code came up? Cause I can make them more than that's on there. You can, yeah, well, I hope so, cause those are just what I came up with. Yeah, there's nothing on the southern border, out of Mercer or nothing. If you were to feel the, largely, if you were to feel it from view of the public way. It is not gonna be a junkyard, you can have all the junk, as long as we can't see it while public road, it's not gonna, they're unregulated motor vehicles, that doesn't count. Yeah, that if you've got three and a half, um so those are the things that we're looking at candidly. I've instituted a policy that is prioritizing our crewways. Unfortunately, if you live on a road that has a number in it, Route Eight, Route Two, one thirty nine, spills, they're on our radars. And with the trail coming through and the park and ride, Martin Streamer is on the radar. Six or seven notices of violation last fall.
Issue things like that, do we also, like people in the direction like where they could get help?
Yes.
Cause I like, I don't want to get to a place where we're like. Targeting homes because they don't look great in their eyes or health code violation, but like that. Family is like struggling financially and it becomes like kind of like a, I don't know, like a.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, so by the launch. Doesn't cost you to throw anything away. If you've got a sedan and you need to drive two miles to waste management, that's probably the reason, you just need to keep up with it. One of the ones that. I picked up on this last week walking around downtown was, there's a dumpster right there, the stuff just didn't make it into it, things like that. It's great, if we were in a different time, I think that's a far more pressing issue, the cost of actual disposal, but you're gonna see. Properties that have forty or fifty vehicles, each one of those vehicles has a bound to the owner of that junk vehicle, they're gonna say, well, that's the anti. That's not justification, that just because you think it's worth twenty ten, twenty grand, it is worth two hundred at a scrapyard, any sort of scrapyard. And by the way, we have people in town that will figure out do that as a charity for you to take care of that.
Yeah, that's what you mean, like I just, I don't mean, I wanna support people in that and not just, you know, like. Talk about like organ depression, like physical limitations, like there could be reasons that people find themselves in these situations and so just being like. Off the rest, you're bad or take you to court, like what connect them with these people can we?
So unfortunately, what we get a lot is neighbors complaining about neighbors rather than a neighbor being. Yeah, the neighbor that his neighbor is gonna go and say, hey, can I help you?
Yeah, yeah.
A neighbor of this mom is gonna come to me and say, oh, there's a junkyard at Chelsea's house. And then. We're gonna go out and if you have a notice violation and try to talk to the resources.
Yeah.
Our working relationship with waste management is above beyond and so that's something that we can use as a tool, but we also can't let them be the victim of abuse. That, you know, people are maintaining. It's very cautious, a lot of people just. It's lazy. Oh, I didn't say that, but it's gone on in this town. It's helpful here in the paint, checking for this and that, we've had those conversations. That's not the guy, sorry, your yard can be a mess as long as it's not fucking junk. Not what we want, but that's what it is, so it's the list of legitimate junkyards. If we don't get to a hundred, be surprised, just a matter of how you're gonna prioritize your resource. Because yes, we'll have those not, he's also talking, he's having to identify. And I can't take away from that, but it also, some of it's complicated.
Right, and then you order the people that have to go next to it. That, you know, I mean, they pay their private taxes too.
You can, you can be a tiny junkyard, I mean, you can make it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of why we decided to go with our choice of days because we knew that. With that salary, we got what we weren't getting for, we get like six hours or something like that through a total month, like. We purposely put that, those funds into that, so I mean, if we're not utilizing any of those things, we're not really spending the budget that we allocated, that's so.
And we have some of those predate, like I've been here for fourteen years, and some of those predate. We have one on Oak Hill, then uh. We had that ready to go to court, it was a bind to that thing and they transferred the property, you have to start all over again. Same John, same. Same people, but because they transferred that property, you start right back. Honestly, if you see them and you know them, encourage them to do the right thing. If you see them and you don't have that kind of patience, call someone out on the list.
So one way or the other, they get, right, identified. So I would appreciate if there was a report, and I like the list, that just comes even fresh, that way it doesn't, by the way, side, it's forgotten.
One other thing, I don't know if we can bring it up, I forgot to bring it up earlier. I just, we haven't talked about it for a while, um about the FEMA remapping, we got any updates on that, like have we, I mean.
You have access to my email. I just, just, just got. A whole.
I just thought of it like. Cause we're like twenty years past the twenty years, it's gonna be done for forty years.
I just got this. On the thirtieth, so last week. And there are all of these layered documents, huge file sizes. That I'm supposed to go through and take a look at, Dave's supposed to go through and take a look at. Before they finalize it and then will be digitized and then implemented by FEMA.
What is this?
So the surveying's already been done or?
So there's FEMA maintains flood maps. To determine whether I can do the flood zone insurance, right, somebody lives in the flood zone, even maybe.
Forty two hundred dollars a year for flood insurance, yeah, and won't even rebuild my kitchen.
Largely just based on the particular river rather than geography, right, and so what this is, it's a grant that they ordered to. Uh can't make a watershed to actually go in and map appropriately. To pull people out where they don't belong and rather than you having to go pay a survey to be certified. Uh so it's a huge, huge, huge project and it's been probably twelve or eighteen months since we've heard about it. And I had to attend a few trainings to kick it off and show community support for it, but it's finally come back and it'll be. Really, really beneficial to have that overlay, because there's a lot of activity that. And and does happen in the flood plain, so how do we navigate that with them? And then we've got a lot of homeowners that are paying mortgage payments and insurance.
And not go to insurance.
I pay seven hundred dollars a year for insurance.
I I thought, I thought, seven hundred dollars would be worth it, I do, I'm gonna take it for.
It is a big thing for both my, my happy turn on investment.
And I I know I'm not alone in that, there's a lot of people who haven't, never seen a speck of water and.
And you better have a hundred.
Yeah, seven hundred bucks.
Fourty two hundred, forty two hundred.
Richard, are you going to reach out to KBH, the historical society and the antique tractor cover, or do you need one to do that?
Anything else?